Everybody will remove your headgear when you pledge your allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want everybody to know that two weeks ago today, I had a knee replacement and it's given me a tough time. So if I'm standing up once in a while, I gotta do a little bit of reeling of the pressure. So I'm not running off. We're telling you to hurry up. I'm just trying to get along here. So we'll live with it. Okay, well, good call of order. All the councilmen, first and three of the councilmen are here, then, or I should say, Chris Nielsen is absent because of medical. The mayor's here. All the city administrators, the city engineer, and city attorney are all present. So we'll go on to the next part of it is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments out there tonight? Going once, going twice, we'll pass it off, okay? Adopted agenda as seen, or is there any changes to it anyway?
The only thing I wanted to add was under engineering, under C, Red Wing Avenue update, add C to third day alerts sent from Northland Securities to review financing projections for Red Wing and then also a sub, we call this a sub issue for Second Street sewer lining, the project we did last summer. We took that out of the SOR fund, but the idea was to, it's too small. It's like 220,000 if you want it to own, but what we wanted to do is put it with another, George talked about this, maybe it was a year or two ago, put in it with another bond sale that was bigger. So that's what he's gonna talk about tonight. Anyway, that was it. That's part of that.
I'll move approval of the agenda with that addition.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye's passed. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda and then we can do approval of the minutes and appointments at the same time.
Need a motion on that?
So moved. Okay, motion been made?
Second.
Second. To approve the consent agenda and approval of the minutes and appointments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's passed. Okay, moving along. Presentation, public hearings, recognition, block formations, and the first one is municipal prosecution report. David Jacobson, attorney, are you up and forth?
I am here.
Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, David.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, a pleasure to be here in this snowy March evening. I didn't know it was gonna snow today. I just took my scraper and brush back in the garage, so.
So optimistic.
Probably using a credit card. So I'm here today to present on the annual report from 2019. I come every year and give a little presentation on where your money's going. Just by way of background, I don't think we have any new councilmen. We do have a new council member. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'll give you a little bit of background, kind of my role and where I fit in the whole scheme of things. So Canyon is a statutory city. By statute, they have an obligation to prosecute misdemeanor, petty misdemeanor, misdemeanor, and designated gross misdemeanor, adult offenses within the state. Okay, so juvenile matters are handled by the county attorney. Felony matters are handled by the county attorney. All your civil matters are handled by Mr. Riggs. So that's kind of where I fit in. So most of it is traffic tickets or misdemeanor community offenses. So you'll hear me talk about traffic offenses and community offenses. That's kind of just how I categorize them myself when I present on total. So just by way of background, I've handled your municipal prosecutions since June of 2010, prior to joining up with Mike here on Steve George's head, which was 2011. So our firm has provided you the service since then. So coming up on almost 10 years. We do it on a monthly rate, sixty-one thousand a month for all services except for appeals, which we don't do a whole lot ever. Our law firm is basically me, full-time. Steve's still around, is part-time attorney. We have two full-time legal assistants. Rachel Stevens handles most of the municipal prosecution stuff for our office, so she's kind of the main point of contact. So as far as prosecuted offenses, we are down from where we were last year. I would note, though, however, that there is approximately 10 cases sent to our office to review, which we ultimately declined, either lack of evidence, lack of jurisdiction, or outside of the city limits. So, but of the prosecuted offenses, that's basically anything that took time and resources. We had 40 offenses for 2010. So by comparison, 18, it was 65. And then in 2017, I think we might have had some different personnel in the Canyon Police Department. We have 85 in 2017. So from 85 to 65 to 40, I've been doing this long enough to know the average is somewhere in the mid-50s typically, highs lows. So I would say that this was lower than normal, I would say. So there's a graph on page three. I didn't, oh, you can pull it up there. So there is a graph on page three that just kind of shows historically prosecuted offenses. So of the 40, 18 or so approximately are traffic offenses. That consists of two DWIs, four driving without, or no license, or driving after withdrawal, seven failure to provide proof of insurance, or insurance not in effect, one seatbelt, two instructor permit violations, one plate required, one reckless driving. So as compared to 2018, traffic offenses, they're significant. So no real uptick or decrease in traffic offenses anyway. So there should be a chart, figure two there. That kind of just shows by category over the last few years. And then the graph on the low, there you go, that is just the number of traffic offenses in a different format. As far as community offenses, we have 22 community offenses. That number is down considerably from 2018 when we had 47. So the biggest drop is in the community offenses. So these consist of obstruction of legal process, assault, criminal damage property, disorderly conduct, domestic abuse, no contact violations, order of protection violations, drug matters. And we had some ordinance violations and hazardous conditions as well. So, yep, drop pretty significant. If you get into detail, the POFP restraining order misdemeanor assaults have decreased from 10 to three, disorderly conducts from six to two, probation regulations decrease as well, drug possession, drug paraphernalia decrease as well. And then that categorizes what we had this year. As far as disposition, we generally wrap up our cases pretty quick. Of the 40, 39 were resolved by the end of the year. So we have one open going into 2020. Disposition ranges from dismissal or dismissal with fine, potentially executed jail sentence depending on history. We did have somebody in Cora Asthma who was going to do about 100 and eight days in jail on probation violation, not a DWI. But a lot of this stuff is fines, probation, as opposed to jail sentences, petty misdemeanors, misdemeanors and so forth. So as far as prosecution resources, this is kind of just the way I keep track of time spent on city of Canyon matters. So I always say that this is loose because I do it on a fixed speed. So I don't, I'm not incredibly diligent about keeping track of time. So there's probably more time than what's reported, but it's a pretty good benchmark. So there's high month of 15.4 hours in May, low month. November, 4.8, average 9.9, which has decreased from 15 hours per month in 2018. So I don't keep track of time on anything not exclusive to Canyon. So research, continuing legal ad, all that stuff, I don't keep track of that. Not reflected on the statements. But I do it, so, because I'm required to. So the graph shows prosecution hours there. As well as far as fine revenue, so I've explained this before, but just so you guys, just to recap, when the court imposes a fine, there's a surcharge of $75 that goes to the state. There's a local library fee of $13, which goes to Giddy County. So that's a total of $88 surcharge. And then as far as base fine, the city receives two-thirds back of the actual base fine. So we don't get a cut of the surcharge, just the base fine itself. So we get monthly reports from the district court and what they collect, what they code for the city of Canyon. The average, or I should say, the range is from $3.33 in one month to $763.23 in another. Overall, for the year, it's 43, 45, and 48 cents, which is less than last year, but not too far from where we historically are. Last year was $51,000, or $51,000 per terrorist. So that's the report. As far as moving forward, I love my job. I love serving the city of Canyon. I love working with the Canyon Police Department. They're great. Even the sheriff's office, they're okay to work with, too. But yeah, I really enjoy it. I like going to court. I enjoy the judges, the defense attorneys. It's a good group. As far as changes coming up, I am moving offices, but I'm also staying in Northfield, that's our primary offices. There will be a change in the name. It's time probably that you're on George's head come up to sign. So we'll be jaded some law firm, let you know on that change for probably the next month or so. So other than that, I'll open it up. If you guys have any questions or suggestions, or you have anybody in town that has any specific concerns or complaints, we're gonna have to discuss those.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, thank you, David Jacobson, attorney. Appreciate what you do. Okay, moving along. City council letter from residing resident concerning allowing chickens in residential area. Each of us got a report on it, the letter that was sent out. And he did contact me approximately the same time he did with Mark. And I told that individual, I says, the best thing for you to do is submit the letter to the council. But I did tell him what my feelings were on it and also what ordinances I had. So other than that, I really don't see the reason to read the full letter, but I do think that we should make a comment as to what we feel going forward should be done.
Well, this has come up twice since I've been on the council. In good times, we've come up with some different reasons. Number one, there's an ordinance in effect already addressing this. My personal concerns and others before me have brought it up is, this gentleman wrote a very nice convincing letter, and it sounds like he would be very diligent in taking care of the chickens and keeping everything clean. Does not mean the next person would. I worry about odor. I worry about vermin. And my biggest worry is, and it has come up in other towns, is when a neighbor wants to sell their house, they put it up for sale, and somebody comes and looks at it, and they say, you know, I love the house, but not the chickens next door. And that's my main reason for kicking the yard in the soybeans.
Yeah, I think if there were, if the public were clamoring for this change, then I think we would feel obligated to have to revisit the ordinance. But until that happens, I don't, you know, we don't, we make ordinances for the good of the community as a whole, not to cater to one person. So I, until I hear otherwise from the public in loud demand, I'm pleased with the ordinance the way it is.
I agree with what they said here. In addition to that, where's the stop? You know, okay, this guy gets chickens, and the next guy wants pot belly pigs. Well, I want a goat. I want a horse. The other thing that really bothers me about that is when you have game like that, per se, brings in predators, fox, hunt chickens and this and that. Well, people with small dogs, let it out in the yard. I'd be afraid for my dog to let them out, you know, for fear of getting hit. If Gideon is really serious about raising chickens, and he proposed a lot of really good ideas, I recommend he get ahold of a farmer, maybe on the edge of town, rent the space, put a coop up out there, have at it. But in town? No. I, I agree with what he says, with what they've said, and, you know, I say.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I told him. The same thing was with use of each express. Here's was a new idea about a coop on the edge of town, you know, with a farmer, that may be a possibility. So I say, let it in effect there as it is. No chickens, period. Okay. All right, engineering. At least water, maybe it's all that, and you got it all down, just about it is. Will this, it could go with a joke.
Vermin, okay. There we go.
Well, you're done.
All right. Well, good evening, council. First item on the agenda for tonight for update is the MPDES permit. And as we've talked about several times in the past, this is your five-year permit that comes from the MPCA because you own and operate your own sanitary sewer wastewater treatment facility. And so that's permitted on a five-year cycle by the PCA. The permit technically expired on February 29th of 2020, but we had submitted the application and all supporting documentation back in fall of 2019 in accordance with their submittal schedule. The last piece we had to submit was the mercury limit. We had to show that we were meeting the mercury limit, that line to effect with your new permit that starts on March 1st. And that new limit is 10 nanograms per liter. And we have enough tests, consecutive tests, that we felt comfortable preparing a letter, and it's up on the screen. It was signed, and it's in your packet, signed by the city administrator through the PCA, submitting those recent tests since the sewer lining project got completed to show that we were consistently getting readings of below 10. So at this point, PCA's got everything they need. They're in the process of processing everything. And I don't think we've received the permit yet, but we haven't heard anything that indicates that there's any impact. So we're just simply waiting for the new permit to be issued.
When will that be?
I'm, who knows? It's very common that they go past that deadline and basically for this time period that we're in here, like, I just continue to operate under the full permit rules and we don't get any trouble or anything because.
I talked to the Stevens, the EPA, or PCA coordinator, and they're working on this Subro Valley watershed phosphorus plan. So once they get that data figured out, then they'll issue permits. There's a lot of towns there just are still waiting. So it's just follow the old one till new one. It could be a year, he said.
So no action or anything necessary by the council. We've got everything, the city's perspective, city standpoint is already submitted, and we're all good with the PCA. We're just simply waiting on them to do their thing on their end. Any questions on the wastewater permit?
How long is a good for?
Five years. Yep. So next one will be up at the end of February of 2024. All right, moving on. Then item B is update on the Canyon Business Park. And this, we had a brief memo in the packet just with an update. The short and sweet of it is we're working on, at the last meeting in February, you guys approved the plat for the business park. The milars got prepared. They were submitted to the city administrator for signatures and then to get submitted to the county for recording. So that's all in process. We're working on the construction plans right now for phase one improvements, and that will include the sewer and water utility extensions to the site, that northern route, you know, where we come up along Highway 16 and down to the north part of the site. That includes the, we need to acquire three easements for the sewer extensions, sewer and water extensions. So we're in the process of getting that paperwork in place now so we can get the signatures. They've been submitted to the city attorney's office. He's reviewing those right now and preparing the documentation for signatures. Once we've got that, we'll be working with most property owners to get the signatures that we need. In the meantime, we're finishing the plans and specifications and getting the permit applications ready. And it should all come together where we've got the plans ready to bring to you at your April meeting for approval. And by then, we hope to have the signed easements in hand and all our permits submitted, and, you know, we're good with permits and easements. And at that point, then, we'll be ready to set a bid date, advertise for bids, and the intent would be to get those bids and bring the bids back to you in May for considering awarding the construction contract. So the short update is plan approval in April and then awarding the contract in May. Any questions on the business park?
It just says you do not currently anticipate any issues with the prior easements.
No, Derek's met with all the property owners multiple times.
Yeah, there's basically, one of the property owners is just a county, unless there's really no issues with that. It just went across the county shop. I've met with owners of festival farms and also practices as well. We've talked to details of what it is that we'd be installing on their properties. I haven't heard anything that's really in particular concern. It seemed like they're comfortable. Of course, I can't speak for them until they actually sign it back to me. But I just haven't seen any, had to be a cost of concern.
Of course, the benefit they're getting is that they're getting sewer and water run through their properties at no cost to them. So given when they choose developer properties, they'll have utilities that they can directly connect to and extend into their developments. Okay, so then moving on to the main item for this evening is Red Wing Avenue update. Few things here that we'll talk about. Primarily, the bids were open on this project last week, and this will be a multi-person effort, or I'll do the overview, and I'll turn it over to Derek to review some of the detailed information. Then we'll visit with Mark and George on the financing. But in general, the bids were open last week. They came in higher than our estimate. The base bid was about 6% higher than our estimates, and then the alternates were both higher than the estimates as well. So I think at this point, what we want to review tonight is review the information and see if the council has comfort level for moving forward with the construction of the project. Ultimately, we'll get to a resolution that's in your packet tonight of whether or not you want to award a construction contract and proceed with the construction this year, or if you don't feel comfortable moving forward. I think the main components we need to cover here are to document whether or not the bids we received were good bids, whether they're competitive, whether there'd be any advantage to rejecting these bids and going off for new bids at a later date. So that would be the first thing that Derek will review is some of the information on the bids. If we conclude that the bids are reasonable, then we can focus on that low bid and see how we can address the financing of it. And of course, the finance of the project has the main components being the assessments that are passed on to the property owners, they're assigned to the property, invented to the property owners, and then the portion of the project that the city has to fund. And so we can look at the assessments and see if we think those are manageable based on the low bid that we received. And then we can talk with George and with Mark to see if they feel the funding of the city portion is manageable. And if we can reach the conclusion that we do feel the costs are good, and the assessments are manageable, and the city funding is manageable, then, you know, we'll reach the point where we can address the question to you of if you're comfortable awarding the contract and moving forward with the project, and whether or not you want to include either or both of the alternates that were bid with the project. So with that, any questions before we start to review the bid information? Okay, I guess Derek, you want to go ahead and review the bid information from what was received last week?
Sure. So one of the first things that Joe had kind of mentioned with this is, I would say these numbers that we got from these contracts, we had four bids, were higher than an engineer's estimate. Really, when we're, you know, taking into consideration whether or not that number is good, or whether or not we received a competitive bid, is how do those bids that we perceived relate to one another? If we're in a situation where we have, we perceived one or two bids, and that number is drastically above what we had estimated, this might be a little bit different conversation. But in this particular case, of the four bids that we received, those two lowest bids were within, you know, 3% to 5% of one another. After looking through their pricing that they submitted with those bids, I don't think there's any reason to believe that the numbers that we received are not competitive. And basically, what that means is I don't see any reason to say that we could make any, you know, take the small change to this project and rebid it later and expect that we're going to get better numbers. For the project that we've been discussing here, you know, the overall, what we're doing with sanitary sewer, the water, the street, storm sewer, if you're looking through these numbers, it seems like this is actually a reflection of what this project actually costs. So in terms of why we're, why we're at this higher number and why we're at the lower number of four, it's just a matter of, that's maybe those prices. We use this term cost estimates, you know, all the way leading up to this point, because that's what they are. They're simply estimates we, we put together, these cost estimates based on historical information for similar projects in the area. Every project's a little bit different. I've had some quite extensive conversations with the low bidder in this case, which explains a little construction, just trying to understand why their numbers are what they are. Some of the, a couple of the items that came in a little bit higher that are of note, at least, some of the storm sewer items, when it gets into concrete manholes and concrete components of that, seem to have gone up quite significantly in this past year, and seeing that this kind of the theme as I'm looking at other projects in this area. One of the other items that I'll say made some of the bidders a little bit nervous about this project was some of the deeper segments of sanitary sewer. You might remember, there's about three blocks of sanitary sewer in this project that's between 25 and 30. Anytime they're digging that sanitary sewer in at that depth, if there's any issue down that depth, those issues become, you know, a little bit more of a big deal just because they're down so deep. So they're taking on more risk to take on the project. And anytime there's more risk associated with the work, it generally means that the bid costs have gone up. So that additional cost seem to have been reflected through in globalization costs associated with this. So those are kind of the two main items that seem to be setting our estimate apart from the bid. seem to be setting our estimate apart from the bid numbers. That mobilization is some of the storm sewer costs that's coming in a little bit higher. But again, you know, between the second call is bidder and the actual low bid, it does still seem like this...I don't have any reason to believe that the pricing that they've provided is not a true reflection of what it actually cost us all that time period. One of the other things that we'll note, they've been looking around at the other projects that other communities are doing, and it's obviously now the only city that's doing the project this year. I've heard from contractors who compare some previous years, there's a lot of work out there. There's a lot of projects that are bidding. On just the day that we bid this project, I believe there's 11 others that were bidding in this southern Minnesota area. Even into this week, there are several more projects that we've been, that'll continue on. So again, with that type of market condition, pricing seems to be going up a little bit. But, you know, at this time, it still seems to be reasonable. It's just a function of the market condition. Any questions on any of that info so far?
I'll jump in with a couple of other comments on that. The overall difference that we saw in total bid, when we include all the alternates of our estimate versus the low bid, the low bid is about 9.4%. So that's the difference we're talking about between our estimate and the low bid. There is a letter in your packet, and with that is the detailed listing of every individual bid item. And I would just point out, if you've got that handy, the very first item, which is the mobilization. And mobilization covers, it's not really a catch-all, but it covers cost for the contractor to move their crews in and out and, you know, cover some of their upfront material purchases and most types of things. And we had estimated about 3% mobilization on the project. We had an amount of $75,000 estimated for mobilization. Usually mobilization will run maybe about 5%. We had hoped that with this larger project, it might be down more towards the low end of mobilization. Well, the low bidder, you can see right there in the went so, their mobilization is $286,000. You know, so they're up at about 10% of their bid. So they're, you know, higher than we typically see from mobilization costs. So just that difference in that one bid item is 210,000. You know, that's the vast majority of the total difference we've got between the bid and our estimate of 275,000. So, you know, 80% of that difference is right in that one item. And so that's, when we look at our costs that we had for the Batuminus and for the aggregate and for the excavation and the sewer, we're all pretty good. I mean, if you take mobilization out, we're within 1% of each other. It's when you add that mobilization in that really creates that difference between the bid and the estimate. So to Derek's point, I think we feel that all of the other items that the unit prices we got for the gravel and the concrete and the Batuminus are all good prices and are consistent with what we had estimated. It's primarily in this mobilization where there's the difference. We don't feel there's anything to be gained by rejecting these bids and going out for new bids right away. And we don't think that you're going to gain anything either by postponing the project for a year and bidding it for next year's construction. And we'll be right back at the same instance where we would learn from these bids and we would increase our estimate, and then the next bid might come closer to our estimate, but it's just because we have a higher estimate. Right now, Derek's right too in that there are a lot of projects out there. And to use the analogy, you know, there's plenty of food on the table and all the contractors that, they all come and they all know they're going to get, you know, they're going to be able to eat, right? I mean, they're not all fighting over one scrap of meat they know, as Derek mentioned, the day we were bidding our project, there were 11 other projects in the region B bid. So with that amount of workload out there, they can tend to give the prices their price, right? Because they don't have to, they're not competing over a small amount of work. There's a lot of workload out there. And we've seen this for the last couple of years. It's a strong economy and, so it's not totally surprising, but I just wanted to point out that almost the entire difference is just in that mobilization number. So...
I also, excuse me, I also see on page three, Wenzel is 50,000 lower than what you had projected for that one category.
Mm-hmm. Right. And that's just it. And when you go through the item by item breakdown, there's a lot of items that were lower. And in fact, the sewer and water, they're lower than us. And we'll get into that a little bit when we talk about the assessments and, you know, how these numbers in the low bid would translate into the impact they would have in the assessments. Because obviously, in the feasibility report, we had to estimate every assessment because we had to present the information at the public hearing. So knowing that the bid now came in about 9.4% over our estimate, we wanted to review the assessments and see if this increased bid would translate into increased assessments or not. So before we start it, if you've got any other questions on the costs themselves, we can try and address those. Otherwise, we'll go into the discussion of the assessments. All right, Derek, you want to?
Sure. So the project assessments are basically broken into four different parts from some of our previous discussions. There's the street costs. Well, actually, I'll describe it in three different parts. There's street and sidewalk, basically the service and business. There's the sanitary sewer cost, which is basically only the sanitary sewer service. Again, for most of the properties on this project, that's the only portion of the assessment that we...And then there's also that similar cost for the water, the water service from the main to our connection from the property line. So just in the, when we apply the low bidder's numbers to our spreadsheet that pumps out all these estimated assessments, what we're finding on the average is that most of these assessments are actually going down by a couple hundred dollars. So basically, just to kind of summarize what's going on with it, Joe had mentioned before that the mobilization cost went up significantly from what we had, from what we had estimated. Mobilization cost is one of the costs that we bump into the street assessment, the street site, overall project cost assessments. For that component of the overall assessment, the number went up quite significantly. But Joe had mentioned earlier that the sanitary sewer and the water maintenance costs that were bid from the low bidder were down significantly from what our estimate was. So street costs go up, water and sanitary go down. Ultimately, what comes out is something that looks like it's slightly less than what was previously estimated. So what we were talking about in previous conversations was this average residential lot. So it's 75 foot wide and sidewalk and sewer and water service. When they put together the cost estimate with the feasibility report, that property had an estimated assessment of $12,030. That was after adjusting the street assessment rate down to that 32%, if you remember that discussion. With these bid numbers, the total amount for that same property goes down about 300,000 dollars to 11,600. So still in the same general range. There's, you know, just like any of these assessment totals, there's some properties that do go up, and there's other properties that go down. And, you know, the amount that goes up and down there depending on that's the improvement that's being applied for that property. But the majority of the properties, that's what we're seeing, they're going down by 300, 400 dollars. So that's, it was actually kind of a pleasant surprise as you bring in, that's the biggest concern when you get these higher numbers, how's it going to impact those assessments? But in the way that this low bidder went with construction, submitted his bid to the ownership stuff coming out, very similar to what we had previously estimated.
Yeah, just to break down the numbers a little more. On Red Wing Avenue itself, there's 68 properties that we identified for assessments, 68 assessments. Out of those, we estimated 48 and then would be equal to or lower than what we'd estimated in the report. So there's 20 out of the 68, so a little less than one-third that would go up in the report. But out of those, only half would go up by more than 10% than what we had estimated. So 10 out of those 20 would be within 10% of where the reports. So we think that's still a reasonable number. And as Derek said, the saving grace was that sewer and water, because we're only assessing the services per your assessment policy, and the price they gave us on the sewer and water services was quite a bit less than we'd estimated. That offset most of these increased street costs. Now, the two alternates, Fourth Street and the alley, we don't have as much of that benefit. So Fourth Street, the assessments look like they would go up, but we're not talking as large of numbers. We're not talking numbers in the $10,000 range. We're talking numbers that are more in the, you know, the $3,000 to $4,000 range. And there's only four properties there. So the total increase of the assessments there is about, when you add all the properties on Fourth Street together, is only about $7,800. But even if we got to the end of the project and felt that those numbers are too high, and we wanted to make an adjustment to those dollars, it wouldn't be a large dollar amount we're talking about that we'd have to, you know, and for lack of a better term, subsidize from the city's portion in order to normalize those assessments back down closer to what the report was. Similar on the alley. On the alley, we're showing that all of the estimates, all of the assessments would go up a little bit. But out of those assessments, there's only three that are even over $1,000. Most of those are in the hundreds of dollars, you know, like the $500 to $800 range. There's only three of them that are over $1,000, and that's because those three are getting a water service. So even though on a percentage basis, you know, we look at the percent they increase, it's a larger percentage, but the actual dollar amounts are small because we're starting with small assessments to begin with. You know, for example, most of those assessments were $300 to $600 in the feasibility report, and now they're, you know, $400 to $900. So still, in the overall, you know, the total dollar amounts, it's not a large dollar amount that we're talking about. So even if we had, you know, the total increase of the assessments in the alleys we're estimating is about $10,000. So even if we had to make adjustments to those assessments at the end of the project, still not a huge dollar amount we're talking about that, you know, we'd have to take on the city side of the ledger if we felt that was necessary. And keep in mind, the way we process the assessments is, we're just estimating the assessments now based on the bids. The final assessment numbers will be calculated at the end of the project once we know what the actual hard construction costs are. So there's nothing we would have to do with the public right now. There's no assessment we would actually assign to them. It's just more informational, you know, analysis purpose at this point to see if we think things are tracking okay. So I think, I mean, what Derek and I are concluding, I think from the assessment standpoint, I think we could manage these numbers based off the low bid and still keep them relatively close to that feasibility report estimates that we had. And as Derek mentioned, on two-thirds of the project on Red Wing, it actually come in at or lower than what we had previously told the public. So we think they are going to be manageable from an assessment standpoint on all three portions of the project. Any questions on the assessment analysis or the estimated assessments?
Well, the way you've explained it makes me feel a lot better.
That's, well, that's our job is to take this information, right, and make it, you know, process it so that we can put it in terms of, give you the information you need to be able to make the decisions that you have to make. So, you know, we're trying to break down into those elemental components of, are the numbers reasonable? Can we manage them from an assessment standpoint? And then the, obviously, what portion of the cost's going to get assessed, like we talked about, what doesn't get assessed, you have to pay on either your utility funds or on your bond sale or on your general levy. So that's the other big component, right, is we need to check now if we think the costs are solid, we think we can manage them from the assessment side of things. Now we need to look at, can we manage them from the city fund side of things? And that's where Mr. Hilekson comes in with his projections for the bond sale and how it would affect your levy and, you know, what Mark has to say about his look at the city funds and the position of those funds. George, do you want to give a little overview of?
Sure.
Mark, do you want to put that?
I don't have any of your stuff scanned. This is from last Friday, so...
Oh, okay. I thought it...
Unfortunately.
Oh, I see it on the table.
I mean, they have the handouts, but I don't have it on PowerPoint.
All right. Well, council will all refer to is the, it's got a yellow highlight on the front, on the top right. And so this page gives an overview of financing the projects that you just heard about the construction bids. It's got three pages to it with three scenarios. The first option, one is award the base bid only. The second page is option two, award the base bid plus alley. And option three is award base bid plus Fourth Street plus alley. And so just from a perspective of how this sheet works, maybe I'll just kind of go through the first one. And then we can talk about, you know, what's the right bid. Each of the scenarios has scenario one, two, and three, which is based upon the length of financing. So 15 years, 20 years, and 25 years. Looking back, the last time that I had numbers like this for you was July of 2019. And the one nice thing certainly about that is interest rates. We've seen a significant change in interest rates since last year. About eight tenths of a percent lower than what I showed last year. So that's really nice in the context that, you know, over a 15 to a 25-year term, you're talking about 300-plus thousand dollars of interest cost savings just with that interest rate drop. So, but just looking at the first page, scenario one, 15-year term, the numbers on the very top there, net project amount, those are numbers right from Derek and Joe from your low bid. Next, adding some issuance costs, that's for your getting your finance and getting your bond issue put into place, getting a bond rating, et cetera. The next line, we show a stormwater contribution of roughly $229,000. So that's, and Mark, do you want to comment on that?
Well, that's, we talked about that in July and probably subsequent meetings, that part of the cost, the city's got a stormwater fund that's built up. I think it's maybe pushing 600,000 now in total balance, that we were going to take a chunk of that and apply it to this project because there's extensive new stormwater, and this is exactly why that fund was set up. But we don't want to, you know, say, take more than 30 or 40% of it for one project. But I think this project justifies, you know, taking a good chunk of it because it hasn't really been used much in the past. And this is a major, that's one of the main reasons of this, besides just the poor condition of the street, is to increase drainage in the whole southwest part of the city, which this will do. So that's why we had talked about an assumption of putting the 200, I don't know if it's listed here, $229,248 from that fund into, you know, the project financing.
How'd you land on that exact number, Mark? 229, 248?
It's based on the cost of the stormwater as a, based on the actual cost, or the engineer's estimated cost of the stormwater for the project.
Okay. And that, with the bids that came in, that number still holds, the 229, 248?
That's a good question, and we'll certainly visit with Derek and Joe about that. We want to make sure that, I mean, that was based on engineer's estimate, 240,000. So we'll update that a few years.
So we may have to adjust it a little bit.
Right.
Yeah, we know the bids for the storm sewer came in a little bit higher than the estimates, so...
Okay.
If any, that number would be...
Do you know from that what the, or does it have to be?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine.
So that number could actually go up a bit?
Yeah, looks like the total...Well, I don't want to speak out...
So the way this is constructed, it wouldn't go up. This is still assumed that 229 is the number. So the additional cost would come from levy, let's just say. So no, it wouldn't necessarily go up. No, we're going to look at these numbers. But this is based on the same assumptive cost that George did during his first run. It hasn't been adjusted to reflect. And I guess I wasn't sure we were going to do that because, you know, it's a pretty substantial amount. And the way these numbers play out in the repayment, I don't know if we have to, because we're very close to what we were in July with repayment numbers when you look at this. So I'm not sure we need to take any more out of there than that. We could...
How much gets contributed into that fund each year roughly?
That I can't tell you off the top of my head. I know this is built up over 12 to 15 years. I mean, the, say, 500 to 600,000.
Yep.
But I would have to look into that.
Do you know when we might expect to utilize those funds again? Do you know when we might expect to utilize those funds again?
You know, you never know. I mean, we could have another street project in a couple of years, we could have repairs that we have to do to stormwater lines, we could have repairs to some of the detention areas, you know, or they have to be cleaned out. A lot of times, the expenditures in that are low, are a lot less than this kind of thing.
Sure.
It's more maintenance. Like when we purchased one of the lawnmowers, we paid part of that out of the stormwater fund because a lot of the mowing is, you know, stormwater. So mostly, that is used more for maintenance than it is for capital. But, you know, if another street comes up, it's something we may look at. I mean, we're always going to want to keep a certain balance in there, maybe $300,000, let's just say. But that's why I didn't really look at increasing that amount, because I still think it's.
Well, I'm not, yeah, and I, I'm not, I wouldn't want to go up, you know, I wouldn't want to deplete it entirely, but I really would like to do all three projects. I think not doing a project only compounds the problem down the road. And so I'm already looking at option three. And, you know, if we could put a little bit more or draw a little bit more from that storm sewer, you know, we could do a 20-year term or even a 15-year term with not a huge impact on the levy.
Yeah.
Which I think is pretty, that's pretty impressive considering that the bids came in higher.
It's so much.
This is, you know, when I first saw the bids, when you sent that out earlier, I thought, oh, man, we're going to, we're going to have to cut out, you know, the Fourth Street, the Alley, maybe both, and we're not fixing anything, we're only going to kick the can down the road. And now we're looking at, you know, being able to do them all. So I, what I'm saying is, I'm open to adding a little bit more, especially since the bids came up a little bit higher. Since we haven't had a large project in recent history and we don't really have one on the horizon, I think we could adjust that number up a little bit more, help offset the levy. That's just my thought.
Yeah, and the other thing to keep in mind is, you know, we're going to have the business park coming up here in a month or two. So that's one of the big reasons, from a timing standpoint, this worked out so well because we have that coming right behind this, so there will be levy impact of that, at least at the front end for a while. So, yeah, and that's something we could increase that amount that we take. The thing with that is that's, I guess we could try to look at, see, this is set up as kind of a one-time, you know, we're going to pay X amount. It's not like an annual amount.
Oh, I see.
And I suppose what we could do, though, is look at some kind of annual contribution from that fund. We haven't done that. Because this is just like a, just a one-time, you know, we're paying X amount of it from that fund, where the other, all the other assumptions are annual. So it is a little bit different that way.
Okay.
But we.
Off the top of the first year, yeah.
Exactly.
Correct.
Yeah. So if we increase it, it may impact for a couple of years, but eventually, that may kick in, you know, $10,000 a year or whatever. I mean, it's such a little amount for a project the size of it, so I'm correlating it. When you talk about a debt payment that's $10,000 and it's a $3 million project, I'm always thinking something's not right, but that's how it is. So if you took more out of that stormwater fund, maybe two years, we wouldn't have a debt payment or three years or something, but I think eventually we would.
Sure.
Unless there's a way we just can take so much every year out of that fund toward, maybe there's a way we can do that, we can look at that.
Okay.
Was there, for Riverside Park or the, redoing the bank and all that, where did that money come from? Where does that come from?
We're still working with FEMA on that. I was actually just exchanging emails with them here today.
No, we were looking at, what, $100 and some thousand or so?
Uh, yeah, it was in the range of $100,000, right in that area. They're currently going through and evaluating that information. What we were projecting was the majority of that was going to be covered by Brent. And we were trying to say conservatively, let's say 25% of that would be what we funded, so.
No, we had to pay it upfront first to get our money back, is that correct? Okay, so.
We take it out of reserve, and then whatever our proportion is, we would maybe build that into the budget next year, I guess.
So then it would reflect back on to this, okay. I just wanted to find out.
So in essence, you could look at the numbers that George is going to review here, that they're actually conservative. And if we were able to just, we could at least justify taking that much out of the storm sewer. If we could review the numbers and determine that it's possible to take more out of the storm sewer, that's just going to make the amount of the bond sale and the annual debt services that much less.
Yes, and good questions because, and I'm glad Mark brought up the business park because the business park is a project where you may not have all these alternate revenue sources to come in to reduce the levy. It's, and I know I'm kind of jumping ahead here, but the business park is one where it's assess the city or the city's levy dollars support that bond payment until tenants come. And so that's where, if there's storm-related costs on that project, certainly there may be a good use of funds there too, so. But going back, and I'll move ahead to option three, that last page, it sounds like that's the favored approach, and so just focusing on the third page then. So we're at a bond issue of roughly 3.9, 3.9, 3.5 million, as you can see, 15, 20, 25 years, all with a, you know, very favorable interest rate, the highest one at 2% for 25 years. And then working our way down the page, of course, this has percentages built in for the different utilities and what they would contribute on an annual basis between water, sewer, and storm. And then the middle of the page talks about special assessments. Those numbers, Derek and I were talking a little bit earlier, may need to adjust a little bit higher from, on this page, they show 800,000 of special assessment principles spread across all benefiting property owners. Bump up to probably about 840,000, I believe. So we'll update this sheet for you. And then on the bottom of the page, just for example, to elaborate a middle column there, it shows an overall new net levy of about $5,800 per year. Now, what we've done is factored in, the actual levy is almost $93,000, so a couple lines up from there. But the debt for this building, actually, the last levy that you had to do for the bond issue was in 2019. So what we're doing is just continuing that levy, which was $87,000 per year, so we're looking at what's a net new levy over and above that 87. So that's that $5,800 figure. When we bump the assessment up just a little bit, that may actually take that number down a little bit more, that might get close to zero there, so. So tonight, Council, certainly thank you for your comments and questions. If you, you don't necessarily need to give us direction tonight on which one you prefer. It sounds like option three, but in terms of which length of financing, this is presentation tonight, address questions, et cetera. So if you have a preference, we can certainly.
Two questions. Number one, where you have the market, the impact on market value. So let's say for scenario two, for a home valued at $100,000, $4.47, is that a month or per year?
That's per year.
That annual impact.
Annual, you trace over, and you pay out.
Okay. Second question, with everything that's going on on Wall Street here over the last week, is it, you don't necessarily see these interest rates going up by the time we come around?
I, you know, these are very favorable interest rates. I should have brought this chart down that shows, you know, 20 years, the last 20 years in the municipal law market. We're at the very low of the last 20 years.
So we probably can't expect it to go down much more.
I wouldn't expect them to go down much more. What we're actually seeing is the investors.